According to Apple, it is three oh one. I will call this special meeting of the Board of Selectmen, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, to order. And our first order of business is to approve the annual town meeting agenda, which is in the folder. The only minor change, because we weren't sure because of the surge in COVID cases, we were sort of whole in a holding pattern, if it was gonna be, ah, here comes Rufus. I'll just wait for him to come in.
Jean, I revised it and put it in the folder.
Yep. Rufus.
Hey, I was having trouble getting on.
We just started. Um, so we're just going over the town meeting agenda. So the one um, change that Joyce made was to have it be an in-person meeting. We were sort of waiting to see what happened with the surge, but we're gonna go ahead with an in-person meeting. And so. Um.
For the, for the annual town meeting.
Yeah.
And that is, that is just in person, that won't be hybrid or anything?
Correct. It will be um, you know, recorded, but it will be an in-person meeting.
Okay, I, I, I will be out of town that day, just so both of you know.
Okay. Joyce, are there any um issues with not having a um Glenn here for that meeting?
You need a quorum.
Right. It's yeah, seven.
But you can still do it with, with two, correct?
Yeah, because it's the people, it's the attendees who are voting.
Uh, that's Thursday. My social calendar is very light next Thursday.
So Glenn, it's a very procedural. Um, the annual meeting is pretty procedural. We go through and that um, first um, agenda item is pretty much housekeeping procedure, from what I understand, it's been said, you know, it's done every year. Um, the second is just the park and rec folks, which again is procedural. And then there's an initial presentation of the capital plan.
Okay, so, so it won't be a problem if I'm not there in person. Okay.
So.
Okay.
And that's at seven, if I'm reading it correctly.
Yes.
So we should be there earlier than that.
To get a good seat, yeah.
But you said it'll be recorded, so I could see it.
Yep.
Like, you'd after, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Good.
So I would hear a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, I guess I'll make that motion.
Make it, okay, you make the motion.
Anything further?
No, do we, the five-year capital plan, that's not set in stone, is it?
No, it's just the, to present it to the public.
Okay. Alrighty. Um. So I can come down and sign this in a few minutes?
That would be great. Um, so we'll vote on that motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Yeah, uh, today or tomorrow, Joyce, correct?
Yes, that'll be fine.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thanks, Joyce. I'll sign that tomorrow morning, Joyce. I'll drop by.
Okay, I'll leave it on the edge of my desk.
Great.
And then the only other um, item is just to review a letter from our resident Janet Skinner. And she um, so her house is on the corner of Lane and North Main Street. And um, the construction, during the construction of the sidewalks, we had to remove her fence in order for them to um, get access to the sidewalk, you know, as they demolition did, and then as they were reconstructing it. And there's a large tree, a large mulberry tree that um was set in the plan for removal, but there was a lot of public feedback to keep that tree. And so we worked with um the contractor and SLR and um did what we could to, to keep the tree, and the tree was saved. Um, that did create some unique challenges to the um, that whole little intersection where the tree meets the sidewalk, meets her front walk. And over the course of, I think it was three, um, I don't know if Rick is, he's not on the meeting, but he might be in the other room with Joyce, so he can hear. When we did our walkthroughs, I think it was three different times, we had a conversation with Ms. Skinner about um, basically detailing how we would correct that upon the sidewalk being um, constructed. And um, she verbally agreed to it and then came back um. And that was pre-demolition of the sidewalk. And what the construction team didn't know was what was gonna happen to that little corner, once the sidewalk came up, because the, the way that the tree sits, it could have been, you know, holding up the tree, the sidewalk. So once they pulled it out, we talked with her again, and the what we agreed upon verbally changed a little bit. And then there was a third conversation, because once the sidewalk was constructed, the, the elevation and the pitch of where the sidewalk met her property line was a little bit, um, again, it was just, it's just a very unique little, like, I don't know, eight or ten square feet. So we talked about doing, again, something a little bit different. And then um, and then we got a letter from her. This was at the end of November. Um, she had, we don't have anything in writing. So she sent this, she paid for um, the fence to be put back up. And for some pavers that she obtained to be laid into the the piece where we had to um, pull up some of her um, walkway in order to redo the sidewalk. So this is the bill. And um, we were certainly, you know, I wasn't expecting, we were expecting to have what we had agreed to done, but this was, she had this done, had the fence put back in, it's all sort of after the fact. Um, I think for the six hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-five cents, we should just pay it out of the streetscape appropriation. Um, and move on. And it's a lesson learned for
Was the tree on her property a hundred percent?
Um, Joyce, is Rick in the room there that he can hop on?
Yes, the trees on her property, but the all the buildings for the fence and the sidewalk repair are the walkway into the house.
So so the demolition of the fence had nothing to do with the tree. It had to do with
Everything had to do with the sidewalk work.
So they needed, they needed enough space and was the fence itself in the right of way? To, if it was that close? I mean, the sidewalk has to be in the state right of way.
Yeah, they need a space behind the actual sidewalk to put forms and stuff, so everywhere in town, there were a couple, usually a couple of feet behind the back edge of it. The way
That was really the only fence that was affected?
Uh, yes. I mean, those other ones with the walkways and floor beds and stuff, but.
Huh.
So, so all the repair work that was done on the fence and, and on the ground is on her property. I'm looking at a picture of it, because I, I took a picture of it before the meeting here. So, so the work that we did on on the sidewalk itself impinged on her own property, correct?
Uh, fence should be on her own property in the right of way on the okay, on the map in front of me, look at where the pins are, but.
When you look at the before, um, it's, you, you can, it's pretty clear to see that they needed access and there was a right-of-way granted, you know, an easement, rather, a temporary easement that was granted, so we have that. It's really just a matter of a, a learning point for us, that when we so when we were doing these sidewalks, we would have these verbal conversations with property owners. And um, now I know that we need to, you know, put them into you know, a legal document that binds that person to what we agreed to on site when we were doing these sidewalks. Which is on my uh, is on the, the, let's not do that again list for phase two. But it's, again, it was, you know, the, we had discussed what we, what was gonna happen before the sidewalk was pulled up, but then when the sidewalk was pulled up, it was a little bit, what resulted was a little bit different. So we had to pivot and do something a little bit different, and then again, a third time, a little bit different, once the sidewalk was down. So again, it was it was dynamic as the sidewalk went in, and Glenn, you probably know that corner better than either one of us, because you walk it all the time. It's a really hinky where the, where her path meets the, you know, the right-of-way and the concrete and that tree, um, saving the tree was um made the entire area that much more difficult to um, I guess, get to a resolution.
So, so like everything else, I mean, you know, i- this is after the fact, I mean, a contractor was contracted and the work is done. But um, to your knowledge, uh, it, did, did the property owner get a, get three quotes? I mean, normally we're getting quotes. Um, did you just go
Yeah, there she, we had agreed that Mather was gonna do a certain couple of things. That she instead went ahead and had this done. I didn't know that she had had this done until I got the letter.
So I don't know if, if we reimburse property owners for something like this, like, 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 do they, do they also need quotes, like, 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 if we just
I don't.
No, but
Because they're not in the, they're not the town, and we wouldn't be getting for something for a project this for a six hundred and thirty-five dollar bill. We're not required to get three bids.
Yep.
I think this is a small bill that we are more than able to, there's plenty of money to pay it out of the streetscape account. We'll definitely, it's been noted for phase two that we need to get these agreements, you know, formalized going forward. So that this doesn't happen again.
Are there, are there other instances where something like this happens, uh, during the, during the project? I mean, you know, this, this letter came out in November, so are, are we um, are we anticipating?
I have one, and that's, I have one more, and that's with the town attorney right now. Um, not much bigger than this one, I think it's a thousand sixteen hundred dollars, but I'm not ready to talk about that, and it's not on the agenda.
Okay. And that one has gone to town attorney?
Yep.
Well, I, I mean, technically, I don't see, because she went out and just did it without oh, you know, entering into a formal conversation with you about that. In essence, we're not really responsible for her going out and doing something out of that, out of the scope of com- having conversations with us. It, it's a little irritating to me that somebody who, you know, sits on, on the value of the property that family owns is even in need of having to come to us to pay that bill.
It's, it's really up to the board, I I, but I would like to get it handled today.
I understand, I just, um, you know, I don't want to set precedent somehow, I mean, you know, moving forward, we need to get things in writing, you know, and um, I think that's very important. Yep.
I think we're in a better, you know, we've learned a lot from phase one, we've the relationship with um with the project is gonna be much deeper this time. Um, we're actually having a meeting on Friday. And again, lessons learned for sure. And I get anybody to make a motion?
I'm not going to make a motion. It's up to either one of you two.
I would say, Jean, why don't you make the motion?
Make a motion to pay I'm sorry, uh, motion to reimburse Janet Skinner six hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents for repairs submitted out of the streetscape appropriations.
Second.
So in discussion, um where do you, where do you want to go with this, Rufus?
I, um you know, I mean, the in essence, we backed off the initial position because that tree was marked for removal. Um, so you know, I don't know whether you put anything in writing with the family to ensure that they know they're responsible if, if that tree causes any issues to repair the sidewalks. Um, I just, I'm hesitant to set this kind of precedent. I mean, it, it is not a large amount of money, but it is, it is a precedent. Um, you know, she should have, she should have come to us ahead of time, ahead of doing it.
And Jean, you said that you met with her and Mather, uh, and um, I mean, did, uh, did, did Mather have any um, you know, a, advice? I mean, clearly, this, this type of thing must happen frequently with these types of projects. Any, any idea what happens with these projects elsewhere?
So we met, you know, this was all again in the process of the sidewalks, the weekly sidewalks that we would do, and if there was, you know, there's always gonna be those unique situations that come up, and this was one of those unique situations, and um there was a lot of pushback from the public on removing that tree. Um, so Mather said that they, they thought they would be able to um, save the tree when they did the demolition. That was sort of the primary concern was that, because of where that tree is, um, that it would get um, you know, it would come down, that the side, that the old sidewalk basically was sort of holding it up. So it was dynamic, and we went and, and chatted, and there was a lot of pushback um, again, from the public. So from that first conversation, we shifted to keeping the tree, which meant doing that detail a little bit differently, but we were always gonna put her fence back. Um, and because of the pitch, the way that her stoop, so her stoop is concrete, the way that it pitches with this big piece of broken concrete from her stoop down to the sidewalk was um, difficult, and that was during the demo, so we changed the detail. But said that we would, you know, that Mather would do this, that, you know, the town and, and Mather is the project contractor would, would do that. And then when the sidewalk was put in, it, it ended up being a little bit different again. So again, we went back to her, talked about what we could do to, um, and we didn't really talk about the fence, because we were always gonna put the fence back. We took it down, so we put it back on, um. And so talked about a little bit of a different treatment that we would do, um. But then I got um, this letter.
So, so when, when you say that we took it down, and we were, we were gonna put it back up again, was that was that discussed, like, was that gonna be an outside contractor? Was that gonna be Mather, it's Mather?
No, it's gonna, Rick was gonna, Rick and his crew were gonna put it back up.
Okay, and, and and did, and did she ever contact Rick, or just went straight to this other contractor here?
She's just, as far as I know, Rick, she didn't come to you and reach out or anything, right?
No, she didn't. Well, I think Mather took it down, right? I don't remember.
Yeah, Mather took it down, the, you know, the construction crew.
How much, um, I know this doesn't directly deal with the fence, but you say there was a lot of public blowback about taking the tree down. Can you give me a number? How many people actually called up? Nobody wrote to the Board of Selectmen, nobody complained, so
I had half a dozen people. I had half a dozen people probably call my office, people very regularly would when they ran into me, would talk about the tree. If you go on the community Facebook page and go back in the history, you will see a, an extensive um, post and multiple posts and comments about um the mulberry tree.
And Jean, refresh my memory, that, there was one or two spots um uh, in, along, along the streetscape project there, where some extra concrete was, was placed, right? Didn't that happen a few places?
Yeah.
Um, that, that did happen. So, so, so as the project went, there were other instances where things had to be shifted, perhaps?
Yep.
So from what you said, Jean, we Mather had to change the plans a couple of times because of a broken concrete slab on her property?
It wasn't, it, it, it's more complicated than that. It wasn't really just about a piece of broken concrete. The way that the sidewalk pitches, it has to pitch a certain percentage, and where that met with her property, um, there has to be proper, Rick, if you can jump in here, and, because we're getting really weedy technical, and that's a little outside my scope, other than the many, many, many walks that I did with you all.
Uh, well, Mather took the concrete out, it was broken. There was too much of a step, uh, elevation change between what was there and the new sidewalk. So then it was
So it broke when Mather cut the old sidewalk.
Well, not, well, I mean, part of it was cracked, part of it, we had to cut off what was attached to the still, because it was all done as one pore originally.
Because the tree, the mulberry tree is growing under her walkway.
As it is also growing underneath the sidewalk. So we had to cut some roots out, probably.
Uh, there was very few to cut out there, for some reason, though, because of the way the tree is leaning and broke, most of the roots go to the backside.
Huh, okay. Well, I mean, I agree that we're responsible for putting back the fence, but if the agreement was to have the town crew do it, she kind of overstepped her, you know, she didn't have a right to just go get a private contractor, then. I mean, you know, but you know, we are responsible, but I think we bent way over backwards to um change things for that one area. My personal feeling.
Do we want to um, I can rescind this motion, and we can um agree, we can make a motion to pay half.
I mean, if, I mean, if you and Glenn think, I mean, yes, we're responsible for the fence, but she should not have gone and done what she did, so I don't, I don't know.
I guess we're reading the, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree with Rufus. I mean, you know, we are responsible, uh, somehow here, and um, but I just don't like surprises. I mean, if, um, if a conversation happens, um, it can't just be verbal. Um, if, if, if reimbursement is, um, is on the table, um, and we just can't be surprised that the next time we go through this, uh, this pro- this process.
Right, there, I mean, there are certain things that are gonna be tough to get in writing, because the, the project is very dynamic. I mean, we were walking every religiously, every single Thursday. And there were still things happening in between there that, because there, I mean, the project, once the project starts, it's a freight train, and you know, there's certain things you can stop or slow down or shift, but there's certain things that you really can't, and it's a lot of moving parts. Um, but definitely learn, learn a lesson for the next time, for sure, to solidify more of these conversations. And we had multiple other conversations that all went unremarkably, talking with property owners along the way. Um, this was one that did not go um, as we anticipated and as we discussed, and I, I don't think a verbal, I think town attorney would, would advise um, that a verbal conversation would be difficult to um that, that we should put this stuff more in writing. But again, there's a lot of dynamic pieces and parts that are all moving at the same time.
I mean, just to, you know, just, just to protect the town and, and this board, you know, I, I would, I would love to have you know, these types of things in writing moving forward, that's all.
So are we anything further? Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor of the motion to reimburse Janet Skinner $635.95? I. All those opposed?
Hi.
Rufus is opposed. Thank you all. And we are wrapped. I will take a motion to adjourn at 3:32.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor?
I.
Thank you so much.